All right, six thought, call it be in order, please rise for the flag leaders.
Flag leaders.
This is the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call every member, please.
Mary. Joe Gieske, here. Courtney Michael, here. Your friend?
Here.
Rock Ray?
Here.
Joseph Philphong.
Yes.
Brad Saransky?
Here.
Ashley Goodman Mason, here. Todd Goodman?
Here.
Devon Met?
I don't have Deb on, um, she's got a recording video.
Okay.
Oh, I got you. Okay.
And also.
All right, public notice, please, Elijah Scott's state statute, chapter nineteen eighty-four, includes the elementary, middle, and high schools, as well as the post office and U B Bank. Just for the purposes of the agenda, please. Please. We'll call every member, please.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson? Yes, can you just, Michael? Yes, Ryan?
Yes.
All right, next meeting date, September nineteenth is the regular board meeting, September twenty-sixth is the annual meeting, October seventeenth, and November twenty-first. All that's six P M. We don't do that many people, we don't, myself, or Teresa. Perfect. Go onto the agenda, public address to the board. See, not everybody's in some agenda, which includes minutes of regular board meeting until July eighteenth, minutes of productive session, also July eighteenth, managing statements dated July two thousand and twenty-two. Approval of country receipts and checks, connectivity counter receipts and checks, consideration of the annual meeting agenda, and notice in consideration of approval for exchange for two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three. This part, like, for motion to approve the agenda as retorted, please.
Make that motion.
A second.
We'll call every member, please.
Anderson? Gieske, yes? Michael, yes? Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes. Under ministry reports, board actions, current business targets.
So what we're like, just, yeah, so what we're like to do is make sure that we have our full deposits taken care of, we have to bring us the board here, so we're looking for motion to approve U B Bank, both government, pool, A D M, and E U L as public depositors for our issue concern.
That's the same as that in the cutting, is right?
Yep.
Good questions, you very good. Not looking for motion at this point.
I'll make that motion.
We'll call every member, please, Joe.
Michael?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson? Gieske? Yes.
All right, onto consideration of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the annual meeting. I'm guessing. All right. There it is.
Being here tonight to present to you in person, I recorded a brief presentation for you, so just a reminder that the presentation you see tonight is a sneak peek of the presentation we'll give at the annual meeting, so you as the board always see what will later go to the public. So tonight's presentation is gearing us up for the budget hearing at the annual meeting, which will occur at the end of September. So in your board booklet are the actual numbers we're asking you to approve, and what's most important about them is that they are best estimates to date, so we took that preliminary budget that you approved in June to get us started, and we combed through every single budget center to make sure that the numbers we had in were the best estimates to date. Common examples are staffing changes, benefit elections, grant dollars, or allocations that are now known that weren't before. This budget, we even calculated our sparsity, which was new to us last year, and realized that because our resident count went down some, which overall isn't good, it actually pushed us up into a higher funding level for that aid, which is good. So those are some common examples of the scrutiny that we are going through every time we update the budget, so preliminary budget gets it, the annual meeting budget gets it, which is what you are looking at tonight, and then the final budget that we approved in October gets another once over. So we're not saying that the data might change between now and October, we're saying it will, we're saying we really have tried to provide the best numbers for you tonight. So the annual meeting, the community members who do attend will be very interested in the mill rate, so we always start there, and our mill rate is estimated to be twenty cents less than last year's, and we know there are some variables that will, could affect that, but we feel that's a conservative estimate that we can share tonight. We are bringing to balanced budget and mill again in October, and as you look at the budget, if you like the detail of it, just know that there are some year-over-year fluctuations that are still occurring due to the pandemic, the pandemic funding. For instance, last year we had a federal revenue bucket that had a sizable revenue increase, and this year we don't anticipate that revenue to come through, so when we're looking at historical trend, we kind of have a hiccup last year, so just know that it's common across the state as we weather the pandemic storm. So at the annual meeting, we focus on these three cods, and I think it's always a good reminder that although tonight we're talking a lot about the budget and the levy and mill rate, the most important things are educational opportunities for kids, and that's always at the forefront in what we do. So starting with our tax levy and mill rates, here's a visual of our mill rate the last fifteen years, and you can see that the last couple of years, last year and this year, we'll say, our estimates and actual have decreased slightly, and this follows sizable stability throughout the last fifteen years in our overall rate. And we are well below, well being relative, I guess, but below the referendum estimate, which was that our mill rate would rise up to ten thirty-one, similar to what it did do in eighteen ninety, but that it would stay at that level for the life of the payback referendum. So we have been able to decrease the mill rate even with that referendum debt in queue. So we do anticipate the mill rate to decrease slightly again in twenty-two, twenty-three. Just to show you where we fit with our Cluster A schools and bringing in, in addition to our Cluster A alternate at Eau Claire duty proximity, this is last year's mill rate, again, no district has set their final yet, but if you look at last year's numbers, you'll see that we fit in the middle of the region districts polled. At the annual meeting, we will ask to have a preliminary tax levy approved, and the tax levy is published in the paper along with the rest of our budget as per statutes. The anticipated or estimated levy for this year is approximately four million, and it's divided between our general fund and our referendum debt fund. This year, they don't recommend that we levy anything for community services, last year we levied two thousand, and there's still enough fund balance in there that we don't need to levy anything this year, which is why that is zero. So if we focus again on that tax levy and mill rate cod, what's important is that our mill rate is estimated to be less than twenty-one, twenty-two, and that still utilizes Fund Thirty-nine debt levy to help manage that rate, create some stability, and by prepaying debt, generate future interest avoidance for our taxpayers in paying back that loan. So now let's talk a little bit about the budget. We take this as an opportunity to talk about our revenue limits and the amount of revenue we receive through this formula, so just a reminder, back in nineteen ninety-three, revenue limits came into play, they control the majority of our school district revenue for people categorical aid came about within the last tenish years, and that has been a component as well statewide, but again, you can see in the blue how important the revenue limit is, and the difference between the solid blue and the dotted blue of the revenue limit, the state shares, and for, for us, it's a majority of it, so the regular blue is the equalization aid portion of our revenue limit, and the dotted portion is the tax levy portion of our revenue limit, so you can see all of our revenue limit authority, majority of it is funded by a state equalization aid. As we've mentioned in past years, open enrollment is really important to us, I'll show a visual later on of our headcount, our headcount versus F T E, which factors in open enrollment, and we'll show open enrollment as well, so as our residents from the count goes down and in fact some per people categorical aid and revenue limit, that open enrollment in revenue is really critical to maintaining the funding needed to operate the programs that we're so proud of. So just a reminder, our revenue limits control the majority of our revenue state formula, and if we want to balance budget, we adjust expenditures to fit within. If you wonder how we budgeted to spend that revenue, we're proposing a balanced budget, so we calculate our revenue first, we fit our expenditures under there, and you can see that a majority of our expenditures are going toward instruction and those people and activities that support instruction, so in the support category, it could be our nursing, our guidance counselors, it could be curriculum, it could, it's our transportation, it's our utilities, and so we, we're proud to show that our orange box and our blue box representing our instruction and our support represent a majority of how we spend the district's dollars. Our non-program bucket would include open enrollment, and includes the transfer that we need to make to our special education fund in order to balance, and I argue that that transfer, because it's covering salary and fringe to service our special ed students, that that actually could fall in instruction as well. If you're wondering how this year fits within our longitudinal trend, here's a fifteen-year look at revenue expenditure, actuals, and then this year's estimate for our general fund, and you can see that only in the last five years have we exceeded our revenue expenditure budget that was in place back in ten eleven, and a majority of that increase in most recent years has come through that increase in federal funding, such as what came in last year and our, our S R funds, S R one, two, and three. So some highlights, we talk about many of these often, but just a reminder, we're doing great things for kids, at our annual meeting, after I present my part, the principals and Joel will talk about the great things that are, are happening in our school, and I think that's really the important part as we come into our annual meeting, so I'm focusing on the numbers, and they'll, they'll share the great things that we're doing for kids. We're also bringing a balanced budget, which we do each year, we hope at year end we can add forty to sixty thousand to fund balance to help maintain our cash flow needs, or the cash portion of our fund balance, and at this point in the year, we're planning for a balanced budget and then hoping that we're conservative and can do that. We're still managing needs and unknowns, the, the budget will continue to change, and even after October it will, but we always try to create plans and contingencies so that we aren't caught off guard and can adjust to those unknowns that we know will occur. We're anxiously awaiting our third Friday in September count, when we can have our enrollment numbers, our F T E count, and we start to solidify our open enrollment as well. I mentioned this earlier, but just remember that the pandemic is skewing some of our trends, so if you are looking at the actual compared to budget and you see some hiccups, those are expected, and if you have specific questions on them, please reach out, I'd be happy to help define them for you. I did weave in some S R three funds, so I apologize for not catching this budget, I believe there's about ninety-two thousand dollars in S R funds, S R three funds specifically we did, and that's made up of some curriculum work that Ashley has been sharing with you, and also our summer school program that has to go through the S R program, or S R funds in this year and into next, so I apologize for that oversight, I'll make sure that's corrected for the annual meeting. The budget does include a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer for Fund Forty-Six, so if you recall, this actually is much lower than we've been able to budget in the years past. That's a result of no per people increase on the revenue limit and the increased cost that naturally happens, so in essence, the states have the revenue limit is staying the same on a per people basis, and what they, it came forward and said is if you run short on money, we need to use your S R funds, and so we were fortunate in that we had our Fund Forty-Six transfer as our buffer, and we knew we would need to use most, if not all of that this year in order to balance, which has, is, is holding true based on our current estimates, and we will continue to forecast and plan for the what-ifs that are coming in the next biennial budget, so again, we aren't caught off guard. Just a couple more, we did include additional referendum debt levies, so even though the mill rate is going down, it does include the ability to prepay our referendum approved debt and create tax levy savings later on, and we're always trying to do things like that, short-term decisions with long-term goals and needs and money, and, and you've witnessed that, it's just a good reminder for the community who isn't at our board meetings as regularly. So just a few more slides, we do have to report at the annual meeting on our Fund Seventy-Three O P E trust, this is the money that was set, is and was set aside for post-retirement benefits. Many of those benefits, the people who were eligible for them are aging out of the benefit. We made plan design changes to decrease this liability, and so as you see, this balance decrease is by design, and for the annual meeting, we have to report on our unaudited actuals from the prior year, the interest revenue earned, how much was dispersed, and who manages it, and so that data is included here, and then just a reminder, all of these numbers come via our actuarial analysis that we have to do every other year by Gatsby standards, and so it just sent the email last week to initiate our twenty-two, twenty-three report, and that comes in and just helps us know if we're on track and, or continue to be on track, and so we'll continue to update you with that as well. So finally, the, at past annual meetings, we've had stakeholders interested in our open enrollment headcount, resident F T E information, and so we always include it as a proactive approach. So first, our headcount and resident comparison, so this is just a good reminder that the headcount, the students that we service every day, is the very visible count for our students. We are funded by our resident student count, and an example of that would be our September full-time equivalency or F T E, so this just demonstrates that there is a difference between the two, and that if you looked at us strictly on a resident-student basis, we would actually be declining, but because of open enrollment primarily, our headcount continues to be fairly stable. Looking at open enrollment specifically, our numbers just keep looking better and better. So these are students again, students who are open enrolled in, are students who live in other districts, who are choosing to come to Fall Creek instead, and you can see that number continues to grow and grow each year, and then the open enrolled out students, those are our resident students who choose to attend to schools somewhere else, and you can see that last year that number decreased, and this year, based on our current applications, we expect that to stay the same, if not maybe decrease a couple of students, so this is always a very telling visual in that we have families who prioritize Fall Creek as the place where they want their students to receive their education, even if they aren't residents. So looking ahead, we have three state variables that we're waiting on before we can finalize our budget, again, many people think, would, would be surprised to know that we are well into the second quarter of our fiscal year before we have our final budget numbers, but that is how it is. So September thirtieth, that third Friday in September count, that report is due along with our summer school, and that's going to affect our revenue limit calculation, so that blue section of the pie, we've run estimates, we feel it's conservative, but just know that that's why that will change, and it'll also affect that per people categorical aid slice as well. On October first, we'll get our equalized value, and that will calculate the mill rate for this year, that's why we say the mill rate is still an estimate, and another reason why we say the mill rate is still an estimate is on October fifteenth, we'll get our equalization aid certification, so remember, equalization aid does not give us more or less to spend, it provides levy relief, and so we will know on October fifteen what that final number is, and again, we've been modeling it, we've been estimating it, I don't anticipate any big surprises, but just know that it does apply until the fifteenth. So with that, at the annual meeting, I would hand over the reins, and we would move on to the educational opportunities. For tonight, that's where our presentation closes, and with the approval of this budget in your booklet, that gives us the ability to release the publication format, so condensed version of it that will go in the paper as we prepare for the annual meeting, and then the budget that's in your booklet tonight will go in the annual meeting booklet, that the community will see and share at the annual meeting at the end of September. So please reach out with questions, I wish I could have been there in person, but I hope this is an okay substitute.
All right. So, kind of the same order that we've had in the past, and we'll, Joel, answer any questions if anyone has any at this point. If we don't have any, we're looking for motion to approve the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three budget for the annual meeting as presented, please.
I'll make that motion, a second.
We'll call every member, please.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes? Gieske?
Yes.
Michael? Yes.
All right, on consideration of proving the six-six-point-zero-three-zero agreement with Eau Claire.
But as, as we've done in the past, you, there's some positions that we can't fund from a full, fully fund individually in our, in our district, so at that point, I'll, I'll store for those services and P T and visual impaired services are two of those, so we'd like to continue our agreement with Eau Claire School District for P T and B I services.
Those are only part-time positions.
Correct. Yeah.
Roughly the same cost as has been, it looks like, too?
Correct. Yep.
Any further questions? If not, looking for a motion to approve the agreement with Eau Claire, please.
I'll second that.
We'll call every member, please.
Ray?
Yes.
Anderson, yes? Gieske?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Onto staff and board reports, starting with the technology update.
Yeah, so, so we've been, you know, our technology team has been going around, we've been working on a bunch of, refreshing all the computers, the last couple of years of COVID, the kids have kept the unit, so it's been, you know, you find a little bit of everything in the Chromebooks, it can result in, you know, just getting a couple of extra purchasing, purchasing some more Chromebooks for repairs, replacements. Google did a wonderful, you know, they marketed well when they had Chromebooks, you know, now they're, they're realizing people are using them longer, so now they're putting end of life on their software so that they can force you, so they won't do updates anymore on Chromebooks that are seven years old, so we're getting to that point where we purchase devices and then they get you for management, so, so there's things along that line, but otherwise, we, we rolled out our, another product called Beat Trees to help control all the phishing emails and attacks that were received, that is, it's ramped up considerably, and, you know, and you're starting to see that in more and more schools in the area, so I think we're on, we're on track, we still have work to do, but it's kind of the last late two-week push to try to get everything done before students are here, and teachers are here. It's, it's busy time for, time to talk.
It's great.
That's good.
Questions?
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much. Onto announcements by administration, starting with teacher and service schedule.
Well, we are days away here, and we had the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth, and then next week as well, Gieske said, or, 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 sent, one of the things that we're really hoping for for our staff and our administrative team has done a great job, put together and created a fantastic job of making sure everything was, you know, in sync, because there's so many factors going into everybody coming in at different times, but we want to make sure that, that teachers had enough time to make sure that their area, whatever area that was, was ready for kids when they get there, and one of the things I think is really important in terms of the teacher and service schedule, regardless of where we're at, or, you know, any P D in general, is, I think we spend a lot of time, and we, we give them a lot of time for the stuff that they've got to get ready, but at the same time, if, if, if we don't give them time to talk and connect and plan, then they end up getting worn out by the time kids come, because there's, I'm sure there are people in school over close to last week, we can have already, just making sure that their rooms are, are ready and everything's ready to go, so we're going to give them time to connect and talk and plan with each other, so they're not, they're, they're running, they'll run out of adrenaline until the point that they just, you know, crash when kids show up, so we're trying to take care of them as much as we can. Anything else from admin team on the, in service, anything, any highlights you want to, you want to put out there?
Nope, we're ready.
Okay. Fantastic.
Onto the school kickoff.
So I can talk a little bit, we have an orientation from the high school's perspective, on thirty-first, and the high school is going to be welcoming our freshman in for freshman orientation like we've done traditionally, one thing that we've worked a lot on is really trying to do everything we can with the parents and the students to bridge that gap between middle school and high school, we have a fantastic P L C group of freshman teachers that are trying new things all the time to make that connection, to make that transition easier every time, so we're pretty excited about that, and it's, the, the, it's will be open from three to seven on that thirty-first, which is the day before school, for people to come in and pick things up and take care of Chromebooks and V E's and everything that has, so that's kind of the first day as far as kicking off things, and we will, in high school, also do our, like, traditional picnic lunch, for the first day, have a little longer lunch period for the, for the high school students, so they can kind of not get used to really nice picnics for, but at least get excited for the first day, so that's kind of what we have in high school.
Anyone else have anything for the one end? Right, on the false reports update, please.
Okay, that would also be me, so today we had middle school cross-country and middle school volleyball starts, so everything has started here, we have great numbers again, high school cross-country's got about seventeen, eighteen runners, there's twelve middle school runners, you got thirty volleyball players, thirty little over thirty volleyball players, a little over thirty middle school volleyball players, and a little over forty in both middle school and high school football, so there's really good numbers out, a lot of excitement, our first football game was last Friday night, the boys did a fantastic job, played a real good game, got a nice win against Altoona, and middle, uh, J. Got a nice win against Altoona. And JV's playing out there right now. So volleyball scrimmage today, cross-country scrimmage tomorrow, so everything's going full bore. It's nice to see everybody around getting into this. Sometimes we start so much before school with athletics that you get excited about athletics before you get excited for school, because they're here doing things where, where the kids, the rest of the kids aren't here yet. So really excited for the fall sports season. There's, at this point, no types of restrictions on anything. So what we're doing this is, as we had it three years ago, as a nineteen.
Right.
Any questions on any fall sports things?
No, I can report that I was in the fitness center on Thursday morning very early, and there were four female hockey players in there. Those girls are ready.
Yes.
Yeah. Very nice, sad ladies, but they're ready.
Try to skim up on them?
No.
Not that foolish.
All right. Next, we have announced by board, just a joint convention, January eighteenth to twentieth. Let Teresa know as soon as possible, because I would guess that you're probably looking up pretty fast for that.
Yeah.
Did it just open, actually?
Did it just start? Okay.
I just saw something when the whole town was open. So if you want, if you want to go, if that's, Teresa Redo, so she, did she lock that?
Yep. Party said she's probably going to go as long as her person.
As long as it's in person, I'll go.
Yep.
It's as long as it's in person, I'll attend.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, and there was no, there was a little conversation about a couple weeks ago and, and no point was, so, yeah.
Okay.
Just, yeah.
If anyone else wants to go, they're welcome to. Then I just had the CISA ten annual meeting was on, I think it was on this fourth. That's just a, it was actually, that's one of our main, it was under, under an hour. So it was just a quick election on some officers and board members. We had a presentation by Joan Wade, who is the director of the Association of Educational Services Agency, basically just talking about some opportunities that are there for networking and quality programs that can be utilized through them. Also, there, there can be a avenue for federal mandates that everyone's able to stay updated with all of the federal mandates as they come out. If you want any further information about that, I can give you her name and information on the site. But that was a pretty quick one, so that's all I got.
Do we have any questions? We have not. Looking for motion to convene to executive session for chapter nineteen thirty-five, one CG, Wisconsin Statues, are approximately six thirty-three.
One second.
Will call, will you represent me?
Anderson, yes? Geske?
Yes.
Knichael?
Yes.
Ryan?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes. All right. Do you have any executive?